Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this beautiful morning in Mobile, Alabama. Ladies and gentlemen, we're down on our hands over Capitol City Curtain, this is Lisa Lambert.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, February 8th. We have approval of minutes from February the 1st.
No issue.
Appeals, we have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on April the 30th from 2:00 PM until 4:00 PM at Dodge Center Parking Lot.
That's fine.
February 19th from 8:30 PM until 12:00 AM, Sandoffin Street. February 27th from 11:00 AM until 6:00 PM on St. Anthony Street. March the 1st from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM on St. Anthony Street. And on March 18th through the 24th from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM, this is in Beenville Square.
We're going to request that the noise level remain inside the park. You know, I like to grant the request, but it's 12 hours a day, seven days a week for a while. But if you remember, when they did the one at Cathedral Square, it caused such ruckus with the surrounding businesses that we need to find a way to make sure if we grant their request to read that the noise level stays inside the park.
Also, did you, have we, I was told that there may be some construction going on?
There is right there at the Old Legends, across the street from the park, they're making that into a stadium.
So not in the park?
Now, I don't know about the construction in the park, I know that they were working on the fountain, but I don't know where they are. There's no construction at this time?
Is a waiver required if they stay?
One minute, Mr. Jones, Ms. Carroll.
But the level of noise, if granted, needs to remain inside the park. That means that the noise at 85 decibels stops at the sidewalk instead of at the property line of their adjoining property.
Mr. President.
Done, Ms. Carroll.
Yeah.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I guess my only question there is, is that within tolerance already? And do we need a waiver if that's the case?
Well, my suggestion on the waiver would be is that the noise level inside the park would be somewhat louder at the point source, which would be louder than normal. A park is a public facility that has no property line boundaries, where people can just walk by the people reading, which, you know, you may need some type of waiver for the noise inside the park because there's no property line there. So that's my thinking. But for the adjoining businesses and everybody outside the park, then the noise needs to stay inside the park if we're gonna allow a reading.
So...
Mr. President.
One minute, Ms. Rem.
When I'm writing, when we're sending them the letter of approval for this, then we'll need to specify the decibels. So what would that be?
I can provide clarity to this.
Ms. Rem.
Okay, so the ordinance says that that is allowed, it appears. As lo- so long as the noise does not exceed 85 decibel at any property line. So it can be 100 decibels within the park, but when measured at the property line, so long as it does not exceed 85 decibels, which according to IACacoustics.com is a freight train at 15 meters. So as long as it doesn't exceed that at the property line, then it'll be fine. So in my general understanding would say that it may not be necessary to just let the law stand how it is and not have to waive it.
Chris, you have any input on that?
Considered residential?
No, sir, that's why I said, what I said about being inside the park and having no property lines within the park and people also being in the park where the noise is.
All right, so the general ordinance just says plainly audible 25 feet or more from the source of the sound. So that's what you're waiving, but plainly audible outside the property line.
Right, so in essence, they would need a waiver for inside the park. That's right, but...
Surely more than 25 feet.
That's right, but not outside the property line. So the noise is not to go outside the property line of the park, but I will allow for the reading in the park because an event like this also has the opportunity to draw people downtown.
Okay, so then the letter would just simply say not to exceed 85 decibels?
At the property line, that means not at the next door, you know, because they used to take the meter and read at the property next door or the neighbor next door, but it needs to be at the sidewalk, noise does not go outside the park.
I've got a question about this, what is a residential area? I mean, is that just not defined at all? And if it's not defined at all, why wouldn't it apply here?
I mean, I don't know, anybody lives around there or not?
Well, there are people that live, I believe, right across the street and a couple of doors down. Also, I can't remember if anybody's, does anybody, nobody lives over the top of the peanut chop or anything like that? But I think when I...
The hotel.
Say again? Yeah, the hotel across the street, that's correct. But in talking with the person that has asked us or asked me about this council account, I think she is of the same feeling that the noise is to stop inside the park, is that not correct? Okay, thank you. Please.
The general noise ordinance does make reference to R1, R2, something like that. Inside the DDD code, which is the zoning code for downtown, there is language in there that says residence, the noise ordinance, these two noise ordinances apply in every zoning district within the DDD, within the Downtown Development District, which is the zoning code, not the bid, but the zoning code. And it does apply in any zone, in any T district, and it's T3, 4, 5, 6, that has residential by right. And all of the districts have residential by right, so that's how it's applied to a residential area.
So if what I'm being told is true, then this area is in fact a residential area. And if that is the case, then a waiver doesn't appear to be necessary. Although I'm, this is Mr. Carroll's district, and I don't want to overstep that. I just want to make sure that we're with clear eyes doing what we intend to do.
As stated, inside the park, noise not to travel outside the park.
Request for waiver of the noise ordinance on October 22nd in Cooper Riverside Park from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM on July 23rd, Crestview Park.
Ah, yes, I got, this is another one on the waiver of noise ordinance. I spoke to Ms. Moore, she's having a family reunion in a wooded area that doesn't require a waiver of the noise ordinance. So I'd ask that we table this one.
The one in Crestview?
Yes.
Okay. February 12th in Melavanna Park from 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM.
No issues.
April 30th in Melavanna Park from 7:00 AM until 1:00 PM.
No issues.
May 28th from 10:30 AM until 2:00 PM in the Performing Arts Pavilion at Langen Park.
That's fine.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to fix cost for demolition of structures at 1567 Fover Street.
I'm okay with that.
1025 Hanon Road, 2050 Stockton Drive, 1775 Pike Avenue, and 4241 Furman Drive.
Ah, yes, Mr. President, on this one, there's nothing, I didn't, there's no information here on the agenda for what this item is, so I'd like some additional information, please. This is fixing the cost for demolition, it says, or just securing?
Oh, this particular agenda item is fixing of the cost. And this is the direct cost of the demolition of the structure and the accessory structure, which is a very large pole barn, and then also cutting the grass and abating other code violations that are on the site. And that has already occurred, and this is the direct cost from the contractor. And we're here to fix those costs so we can send an invoice to them.
Understood, thank you.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Eddie Irving has a presentation for Council President's Law. Sabina Sahai discounts on the effects of Broad Street construction on their business.
Lisa, just a second. Has the administration heard from this guy yet on Broad Street? I keep hearing from him that he reached out two years ago and continued to ask because of non-access to his business or slow access to his business based on foot traffic.
Yes, we've had some communication with him, your predecessor talked with him a great deal, but he is not a singularity, so we'd be glad to hear what he has to say when it comes to meetings as well.
Okay, but he's currently not suffering now, is he? Well, I don't know, I mean, the street just opened back up, what, about three weeks ago on that end? And then last week on...
That section was open a lot a long time ago, but...
Well, I think he's in between Dolphin and Spring Hill.
He's on, yeah.
It's been about three weeks, right, three weeks or so?
No, no, it's, he's on the corner, he's on, I think on the corner of Spring Hill and...
Yeah, he's at...
And, like, nine months or more?
He doesn't, he doesn't own the ABC liquor store, it's not ABC anymore, he doesn't own the ABC store up the street, does he?
Dr. Claude Schufert, Reverend Clinton Johnson, Charlie State, and Reverend Cleveland McFarland, Wesley Young, and Pastor Marvin Lou are all redistricting. Ordinance is held over 64004, ordinance to rezone property located at 118 Kilmarock, Kilmarnock, Kilmarnock Street from R1 to B2. 64005 rezoned property located at 117 North Catherine Street from R1 to B2. 64006 ordinance to rezone property located at 2621 Ralston Road from R1 to B2 and B2 to B2.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Could someone refresh my recollection on why 64006 was held over?
First read.
First read.
Oh.
Resolutions held over 01111, authorized agreement with Design Force Inc. for an exhibit at the Gulf Quest Maritime Museum.
Yeah, I have a question on that, Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Jones.
What is this grant? I'm not familiar with that, just wondering where that grant's coming from.
The Gomez is a golfer, Mexico.
Yeah, it's...
State grant, okay.
08112 approve item base bid for fire nozzles. 08113 approve item base bid for fire bunker gear. 08114 approve purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for fire turnout coats and pants. 08116 approve purchase orders for fuel for the wave transit. 08117 approve purchase order to Tilter for trash containers and lids. 09118 transfer funds from general fund to neighborhood development for Africa Town redevelopment.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Rem.
I have no idea what I'm voting on with this line up. There's nothing attached to the agenda, I haven't been able to see what it is. I just got a very brief explanation last week, so I don't know what this $250,000 is really going to.
Just the general fund?
Transfer from general fund to neighborhood development for Africa Town. In the, in the, within the near future, I guess, issue a contract for it.
Yeah, it's all part of the treasury contract, it'll be additional funds to that same treasury contract of the Redevelopment Corporation that was state authorized back in fall. So it's an additional 250, on top of the 250s in the second resolution for ARP.
These are matching funds, I assume?
Not matching funds, it's coordination between the city and the county. So the building we purchased for the food pantry originally, Redevelopment Corporation didn't exist when we purchased that, so we're gonna have both of them housed in there eventually. The county has decided to demo that and rebuild a new building on the same site that's more conducive to what they're doing. So the city's portion, instead of getting involved in the 1.4 to 1.8, new construction of a building, we're putting in 500,000 towards operations.
And will this will be a recurring 250,000 or 500,000 annually to support the operations of Africa Town Redevelopment Corporation?
Right now, it's just the one time, that'll be part of budget next year if it is. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I mean, just to note, this is in partnership with the county also. And the county is actually, actually has the lion's share of this project. The project is well over a million dollars. The community has a, does not have a food area, it's, it is no food restaurant or grocery store or anything out there like this. So it's a major improvement to an area that has been overlooked for many, many years here. And our contribution to that is relatively small compared to what the county's putting up for.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rem.
21119 authorize contract Cannon Solutions America for copier rental and support. 31120 update the American Rescue Plan to allocate funds to various social services organizations. 31121 update the American Rescue Plan to allocate funds to the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama. 31122 update the American Rescue Plan to allocate funds to small business assistance. 37123 consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to George Austin St. Clair doing business as mob city riots to operate a sedan service.
When getting this one resolved, Mr. Carroll or Mr. Arlitt, talk about how this one was gonna be handled? I know that there was discussion of an ordinance last week, but it's again...
I've got a draft ordinance that is, I've come up with, circulated it to Mr. Carroll and also to several of the city staff, who are awaiting their comment on that. In the meantime, the, there's, the carts, if they have all the safety equipment, are a gray area. There's nothing flat out that says you can have one, there's nothing flat out that says you can't have one. You can get a car tag for them, if they have all the equipment, which is set forth in the Code of Federal Regulation, windshield wipers, lights, turn signals, seatbelts, everything a car has, basically, street legal, like they were talking about. So the Attorney General opinion impers that they are legal. My question was, why do we have a special state act for the city of Mobile to have these things if they were already legal in the first place? But, you know, I think if you want to temporarily approve it or give some sort of timeframe until we can get this ordinance in place, that would resolve it both ways.
And what I would hate to have happened if, especially if an ordinance is being considered to address this particular item, would be to approve this application, which will not return back to this council. It will go our approval, and then it would subsequently be approved administratively and never make it back. So then we would have this one, one group that wouldn't be subjected to it, or am I wrong? Whatever the ordinance was, say the ordinance came out and it said from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM operating time. This guy's asking for 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Wouldn't he then have to just come back before this council? After he's got his business operating, we adopt an ordinance that is gonna directly affect him? And so it may make more sense to approve a short-term approval for this, so long as the council wants to do that rather than put him in that cycle of, hey, it's guaranteed forever essentially with administrative approval.
He's gonna have to comply, if there's an ordinance gets passed, he's gonna have to comply with the certificate as just basically a franchise, the right to operate.
Right, so I guess my question is, would, would, would this group be better suited to know that an ordinance is being considered and may affect his business and just approve this temporarily, knowing that his, he's operating just temporarily with this public convenience?
Go ahead, Chris, you're pondering or?
I think I would approve it, if it was my decision, I'd approve it temporarily for some period of time. Get past Mardi Gras and, yeah, advise the guy, look, there's probably an ordinance coming, you're gonna have to comply with that. It may alter what your business plan is, it may not.
What do you think, Mr. Carroll, like, six months or something?
Well, first of all, I had a lot of thoughts on this, I actually mentioned it to a few other people too in other cities. And had some experiences this weekend that made me triple thank this. This weekend, I was at the University of South Alabama on Oshel Road behind a slow-moving vehicle that only could do 25 miles an hour and the rest of the traffic was about 35. So to have an ordinance that allows them on major thoroughfares could be somewhat difficult. The state legislation currently does not allow them on major highways. Highway 90, Government Street can be considered a major thoroughfare, but when they're trying to get from neighborhood to downtown could be difficult sometimes. So there's gonna have to be some type of thought as to where and how and when they operate. Hate to see a golf cart on Airport Boulevard, on Government Street, or Spring Hill Avenue. So, you know, we're gonna have to put some consideration into that as we go. But as far as a temporary license for the company, I don't have a problem with that as discussed with you earlier. I think that I would want to talk to him a little bit more too, to know where he's trying to operate. Because I was, my thinking was is that he was operating downtown within the Hank Aaron Loop. Now, that would be totally different. So just a temporary time limit, I'm fine with that until we have the ordinance in place. Maybe get it past this Mardi Gras season and then see where we are. So I would say three months instead of six.
And Chris, procedurally here, we are amending the application, is that what we're doing?
Amending the resolution, the certificate, what number is it?
Well, you know, there's a question also. In order to do this, he also has to have a city business license, right? The city business license is gonna be granted for a period of one year normally, correct? And that year starts from the point, is it prorated from the point of purchase? Meaning that if he buys it this February, he only has nine months instead of 12, correct? Is that not correct? He'd only have nine months instead of 12 months. Can somebody answer that question right quick? That's correct. So he would have to get a new business license to operate after nine months. Once he got a new business license, he'd have to fall under the ordinance anyway, wouldn't he?
It, the business license is contingent on complying with all city ordinances, they all...
So if we pass a new ordinance within the nine-month period, then with his business license, he'd still have to fall under the new ordinance this period?
Sure.
So there's really no need to put a restriction on his request?
Other than it's a bit disingenuous to say you're approved for this certificate of public convenience for a year. And that's not being as forthcoming as we could be in saying, hey, look, we're considering, let's go three months, nine months, six months, whatever it is.
In all actuality, it's only nine months, because the license only gives until the next year.
Mr. President, does, does he not already have a business license?
He has to have this before he gets the license.
So he's not operating at all downtown? All right, whatever we decide to do, we need to make clear so that everybody understands if we're amending his request or exactly what we're doing. So, Chris, if you can speak up a little bit too, it would help me.
The resolution 37123 needs to be amended to whatever, to, it says right now the application for a certificate to operate sedan services hereby approved, it needs to say hereby approved for whatever time.
And could we, Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. State.
Could we also confine the operation of the service to inside the Henry Aaron Loop?
Sure.
Or at least the three months or whatever we decide to go with.
There'd be two restrictions, three months and inside the Henry Aaron Loop.
Ms. Carroll? Yeah, I think his license don't renew till January.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's more than nine months. But I would just say, I'll just give him maybe up to six months, they give us enough to have a committee meeting also to see what nearby cities are doing with their golf carts and probably see if we can follow the same.
I'm absolutely fine with that, but my thinking about this is that we're talking citywide, and that's why, you know, I was thinking the way I was. This is going to affect, I think, Spring Hill and the country club. This is going to affect Skyline Ranch, the Skyline Country Club. This is gonna affect neighborhoods that actually have golf courses, then with owners that have golf carts that use them to traverse between their homes, the course, the streets, and everywhere else too. So some consideration needs to be given to that. I'm okay with the three or six months inside the Henry Hank Aaron Loop, but I don't think that in reading this, he defined the area in which he was going to be working, did he?
If I recall, last week he did mention something about, you know, future of USA.
Well, he said that he wanted to be able to do things like for special events, potentially something like USA, but what he's got is basically a sedan, not the little golf carts that people drive around neighborhoods right now. And that's what I asked about last week. So we need to define this for him for a temporary period of time, as well as the area, which would be Henry Aaron Loop. Is that what you're looking at doing for now?
But it's not, it's not district specific.
Well, I'm just saying, do we need to not do it district-specific or area-specific for now? Because I think he's more concerned right now for the Mardi Gras season.
Mr. President.
Hold up, Ms. Rem.
We need to actually talk to this guy.
Yeah, well, he may be down here for the regular meeting, I don't know.
I'm fine with inside the Henry Aaron Loop.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, we are resolving that, this one application for operating this sedan service, be approved or not approved. We're resolving one application, we're not resolving all golf carts throughout the city. We're not creating an ordinance that's gonna restrict any golf cart throughout the city. This is resolving one application. So the implications are not widespread, implications are limited to this very single application. We can resolve it to be whatever we want to. We can say, limited to, we resolve, as Chris said, that this application is limited to inside the Hank Aaron Loop and between this hour and this hour, and limited to however many months we so choose. So, and then that allows this gentleman to, this organization, to operate their business as they have planned in downtown Mobile for a limited period. That's all we're doing, is that correct, resolving one application?
Jones.
I think all that's in the air is, are we doing three months or six months? Mr. Carroll, what would you like?
Let's go six.
Six months, inside the Hank Aaron Loop. Chris, can you draw it up? Thank you. Same hours he requested.
Same, same hours.
Yeah, same as the request.
All right, so we'll just have an amendment then at the regular meeting?
This try is also see by trying to schedule committee meeting right out of Mardi Gras.
All right, Madam clerk.
Hey, one thing, has every council member seen the proposed ordinance yet?
No, sir.
Let's get it out to them when we get a chance, see what everybody else thinks. Because there seem to be some, little bit of difference between the state and the city, and then look at whatever other cities done also.
Madam clerk.
Commander Clark.
Sixty-one, um, two-four. Resolution sixty-one-two-four, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims. Consent resolutions being introduced.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Hey, if we can go back to thirty-one dash one-twenty, um, I would like, it's pretty vague in which groups are receiving what amounts of money. If we have a list of who's receiving what and who applied for that, that would be of great help, 'cause I foresee some questions coming up to us that we need to be able to answer. And I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gregory.
Uh, I agree with Mr. Councilmember Jones on that as well, but I also have another question. I know that, um, some of the funds are being allocated for home repair grants and things like that. And Jamie, I was just wondering if there's an update on when those funds are coming in? And when we can start taking applications, holding meetings within the neighborhoods, that kind of thing?
So, the first question, the, the individual groups that are getting, uh, proposed to get funding, it's built in that resolution itself. I can give you a copy of it. But there, it has the, uh, reasons why and all that too, as far as treasury eligibility. Uh, housing assistance, we're looking at taking applications probably in April in coordination with the HUD funding that's theoretically coming in May. So, we have time to do an environmental review before we get the funding in place.
So, in April, we can start taking applications?
Yeah, for our, our normal program. The, the treasury money is just an enhancement to further that program, housing rehab.
Scott, I've got a copy of this right here, and I'll let you look at it.
Commander Clark.
Forty, res, consent resolutions being introduced, forty-one-two-seven, one-two-eight, one-two-nine, one-thirty, one-thirty-one. Are fixing the cost of demolition of structures. Fifty-eight, one-thirty-two, declare weeds noxious, weed lean group, sixteen-twenty-five. Sixty, one-three-three, one-three-four, are determining appropriations to the Clotilde Descendants Association Service of Public Purpose and Approved Payment. And determine appropriation to Providence Foundation Festival of Flowers, serves a public purpose and approved payment.
C-one-thirty-three? No. I just wanted to know the number.
Oh, sixty-one-three-three.
And I wanted to know the amount of the appropriation.
Oh, the amount?
Okay. It looked like five thousand this morning, I was gonna. I was gonna.
Sixty-one-three-five, one-three-six, one-three-seven. Are approve award a special bonus to public services employee of the month, uh, public works-at-large employee of the month, and Parks and Recreation Department employee of the month. Um, we've been asked to add one, which would be forty-six-one-five-two. And this is to, uh, honorarily name Saint Stevens Road, Michael A. Figures Boulevard.
It's gonna hold that. I consent to add, takes through the add, right? Good, scary, I mean, go ahead with that today.
Yeah, but we're gonna, um, hold it over next week.
But it's under consent?
It is under consent.
It's under consent. We can just put it on next week instead of putting it on.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do that.
For next week.
So, you, you just wanna wait and not add it today?
Yeah.
Okay.
CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one-one-three-eight, authorized contract amendment with Southern Earth Sciences for annual landfill sampling requirements for Bates and C and D landfill and Hickory Street landfill, fifty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Hold on a second. Carroll.
It's not CIP, it's not CIP.
So, this needs to go under resolutions being introduced?
Okay, so we'll.
That, that's the first question. Uh, second question is, is this, this is, uh, an, the annual sampling of the water wells out there? What is this? Taco, you. Right. So, these, so there aren't the wells, this is just groundwater? Where we have, right, okay. Um, just a quick question. Um, I think I read somewhere a few years ago that it's about twelve, costs us about twelve million dollars to get one portion of this cleaned up and another thirty to fix it in fields, so we can get that property back into the, the hands of the city, get it back on the tax rolls, and get it back where we're manageable. I mean, have, do we have a plan for that? Uh, do we have a process that we've considered? 'Cause for some time now, that property's just been sitting there with no use whatsoever. And we can talk about it later.
Uh, Colonel DeLa.
You know, we don't, Colonel, we can talk about it later, but, you know, we need to, at some point, need to start addressing that.
All right. Commander Clark.
Zero-eight-one-three, resolutions being introduced, zero-eight-one-three-nine. Approved purchase order to postmark for annual business license renewal, print, and mailing, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Zero-eight-one-forty, approved purchase order to S H I International for one-year security awareness training, fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Zero-eight-one-four-one, approved purchase order to tech vendor for annual renewal of recognition software. Um, Mobile Police Department, Cyber Division, forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Zero-eight-one-four-two, approved purchase order to ProTech Video for annual software and storage license, Mobile Police Department, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Zero-eight-one-four-three, approved item-based bid for approval for printing of banners, posters, postcards. Zero-eight-one-four-four, approved item-based bid for printing of corrugated plastic sheet signs.
Mr. Small, uh, Mr. President?
Okay, Mr. Carroll.
I'm not sure what this, uh, the corrugated plastic sheet signs are on.
Those are the, those are the signs that we use to put out, uh, designating special trash days, garbage days. That we put around the neighborhoods so that when we put them in the ground, they're, they're like, uh, just temporary signs.
It didn't say anything in the agenda about what they were being used for.
Twenty-one-one-four-five, authorized contract with Danielle Baca, Baca as cyber, uh, specialist, forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Twenty-one-one-four-six, authorized contract with Joshua Jones as youth violence prevention coordinator, sixty-five thousand per year funding from the American Rescue Plan. Both are funding from the American Rescue Plan. Thirty-one-one-four-seven, authorized grant agreement with State of Alabama Department of Transportation to accept and receive four hundred thousand from the Transportation Alternative Program for implementation of the Mobile Greenway Initiative, Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail. Sixty-one-four-eight, request Mobile County Legislative Delegation to propose legislation to grant the City of Mobile authority to pass an ordinance to enforce traffic violations through the use of photographic evidence and issuance of civil fines.
Mr. President?
Mr. Davis.
I placed this item on the agenda. My observation over the last several years has been that the incidence of drivers in the City of Mobile, uh, driving through red lights not observing stop signs is increasing dramatically. And, uh, I think this poses a safety risk to the other drivers and to pedestrians in the City of Mobile. And I think that the, I think we're all agreed that the first obligation of any government is to protect the safety of its citizens. Uh, and this, this poses a significant safety risk. Now, other municipalities have, it, we can't do it ourselves. We have to go to the legislature and be authorized to do it. And a number of other cities in the State of Alabama have done so. Cameras are up in Auburn, Center Point, Midfield, Bessemer, Montgomery, Oakley, and Selma. Um, Montgomery, which was the first state to put up the cameras, has a system that relies on three images. First, a view of the vehicle before crossing the white stop sign of the red light. Two, an image that clearly shows the vehicle has run the red light. And three, a close-up of the violator's license plate. Now, Montgomery says its system has reduced intersection colla, uh, intersection collisions by more than fifty percent and more than eighty percent in one instance. Now, the City of Bessemer had got the, asked legislature, and they passed an act. The city, in connection with that, legislature found that stu, this is, the legislature found that studies have found that automated traffic camera enforcement in a municipal area is a highly accurate method for detecting violations of traffic control regulations and signage, and is very effective in reducing the number of traffic violations and decreasing the number of traffic accidents, deaths, and injuries. Now, we all know this is happening. We also know that our police force, our police officers cannot be at every intersection twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. Uh, we have drivers failing to abide by our laws and endangering the lives of themselves and others. We have a safe, there is a safe, effective means at our disposal, if we choose to pursue it, to address the issue. Now, all we would be asking the legislature to do is to give us the authority to employ this technology. Where we put the cameras, how they operated, that kind of thing can be left up to us. All we, all I'm asking for is that we get the, ask the legislature to authorize us to do it. We'd still have to come back to the council to determine how it's, how it, how that authorization is gonna be utilized. Now, I've had a conversation with several of my colleagues about this. And one step forward, uh, to address some of their concerns that, that occurred to me is that, uh, what we might do, uh, what I might do, working with, uh, Mr. Arledge, is, uh, before we, uh, took up this, uh, resolution, is amend it to include a draft bill which would state, uh, how we were gonna use it under, under the, how it was gonna be configured and that kind of thing, uh, to alleviate some of the concerns of, of some of my colleagues. And I'm perfectly willing to do that. Uh, so, I, I, I think it's, I think it's, I put this on here to start this, uh, discussion. Uh, I think, I think the idea has merit. I, I'm, and again, all we're asking the legislature to do is give us the authority to do it, and we can figure out how we're gonna do it later on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another council members?
Um, yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Gregory.
When these other cities have, have done this, and I know Montgomery is way ahead of the curve on this, have they also had to go to their legislative delegation and, and ask for permission? So, so, it's, it's nothing new.
Another council members?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones.
Um, first off, I'd, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, if you don't mind, Mr. Davis on this. Um, just a short time that, that, since I've been elected, there's been two incidents that I personally am aware of at intersections in my district that this has happened at. One creating a six-car pileup, one had a pickup truck run a light, flipped over another car. Not even sure what the extent of the injuries were, but they had to be extremely serious. Um, I know there's always hesitancy when you have cameras looking down and, and judging us on our actions. But as long as we implement the system that is in Montgomery, I think it's, it's a absolute sure-proof way to validate that when you get a citation in the mail, it will prove to you that you did run a red light, not a yellow light, a red light. It will show where you are in the intersection, it will show the red light, and it will show you your tag number. And all three of those will be time stamped. So, it will prove that that vehicle did in fact run a red light. We have a shortage of police officers in the city. Um, and, you know, this may be a, a good opportunity. Chief Batiste, if you wanna weigh in on, on what your thoughts are on this, I, I would like to hear it from a professional perspective with regards to our city, not so much even the others that we've heard that have identified an issue. Is this something that we need? I'd, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
So, our perspective from the public safety standpoint, obviously, it's, it's another tool that we could use that will assist us in identifying those individuals that commit traffic violations. Um, certainly, we are, uh, from, from my perspective, we're in the business of enforcing the laws and rules and ordinance of the state, the city. And certainly, we would, uh, certainly welcome the oppor, opportunity to have another tool that we could use in addressing some of these concerns. Uh, I, I also would, would agree with, with some of your colleagues that, uh, you know, where these things should be deployed, I think we should spend a little time, uh, putting together what intersections are most likely that we need to put this type of technology in without w- without, uh, uh, causing an undue burden in particular on, on some of the communities that would be most likely unable to pay some of these fines that would come as a result of, uh, red light cameras in, in their communities. So, I think there's a lot of more work that needs to be done in the process as we move forward. Certainly, we have no objection if, if the city council, uh, moves forward with, with such a resolution.
Another council members?
Just one last comment, and I'll, I'll be done. And I think this has got to be in conjunction with, uh, I think one of the reasons that you see this happen is, is because our traffic lights are so misaligned in this city, and people get frustrated. And, and then they run a red light because they had thirty seconds to get through a green light on a major road. I think we're addressing that as well. I, I think we have to look at all this from a holistic perspective and ensure that we're doing, excuse me, we're doing everything in, in line to make sure that, that our traffic lights are synchronized as, as we're expending quite a bit of money to do that. Um, but at the end of the day, if the red light is, is there, we need a way to enforce the law to keep people from, from getting injured um, by taking the law into their own hands and, and running these red lights. Thank you.
Another council members?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pan.
Um, I definitely agree that we need to do something, but I do, um, some of my concerns are what Public Safety Batiste mentioned. Um, so, I, I do believe we need to do some research, you know, and, and get some more information. But I know there's a problem in our city. I've been having issues, uh, with people speeding and the course running, um, the red light. Um, so, we need to do something to put in place, so I definitely understand the concern. But, um, I do, I would like to do some re, you know, more research and get some more information, staying with Public Safety Batiste mentioned.
Another council members?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Davis, for bringing this, uh, to us, and I believe that, uh, I would like to join too as a sponsor also. Because this is something that, um, that really is the fact that I was sitting more than just in District Five, but sitting across rid of all across our city, you know, uh, people are just comfortable now, uh, too comfortable. Throwing our trash as they're going down the street. Um, was in District One yesterday, and, um, someone just, you know, we was out there picking up trash, and someone just just threw it out.
Right in front of you, huh? Or right behind you?
But, uh, but we really need to get people from being uncomfortable, and I believe that cameras is one of the best things to do, especially with, uh, running red lights.
Yeah. And, and I think we already have a list, if I'm not mistaken, of the deadliest intersections within the city. You know, this is something we have looked at for years. But I also understand where Director Batiste is coming from, and I know that when people are stopped now for traffic infractions or other things, there is probably a mechanism in place to work with them if they're not able to, to pay fines. And that's something that we certainly need to look at before we, and put something like this in place. But we need to do better at protecting the, the driving public and try to alleviate some of these issues that we have and the problems that we're having. And hopefully, Mr. Small, that that will take care of some of that litter as well. But I have, uh, signed on with, uh, Mr. Davis to also be a co-sponsor.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Uh, you know, i- in terms of the placement of these, uh, I, I, I think, I think Councilwoman Gregory's got an excellent idea. We start out with, uh, with, uh, some of the deadliest intersections and put them there. We, we don't have to deploy a hundred, a hundred at the get-go. We, we could deploy five, or ten, or fifteen, or something like that at the get-go and see how it works. And, and if it is effective over time, and we got the statistics, we know at the intersection of Azalea and Airport, we've had X amount of the, you know, X amount of accidents that have been caused by running red lights. We, we could look at statistics going forward and see if this, see if, uh, this, uh, technology helps and then move on. But, but the.
But, but the first step is to get the legislature to give us the authorization.
And other council members? Commander Clark.
60, 149, authorized release of claims and settlement agreement. Call for public hearings, 41, 150, call for public hearing to rezone property located at 1451 Cedar Crescent Drive from R3 to R3 to remove conditions of the existing zoning amendment. Scheduled March 8. 41, 151, call for public hearing to rezone property located at the southwest corner of Ziegler Boulevard and North University Boulevard from R1 to B2, scheduled March 8. Announcements.
Anything from the council?
Uh, Mr. President?
Ms. Gregory.
Just want to remind everybody that we have scheduled a public safety committee meeting for February 22nd at police headquarters. Uh, we need to be cognizant of that date and what may or may not be on our agenda, uh, because we may have to be flexible with the time that we arrive. So, um, if there are any specific questions, issues, information that you would like for, um, Director Batiste to provide at that meeting, you know, please, uh, send that on to him. I know he's already got a lot of things lined up, uh, that will be of great interest, I think, to everybody, but just keep that on the calendar, February 22nd. We've got it listed at 1 o'clock, but just know that we may have to be a little flexible with our arrival time.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would just like to let my colleagues and the staff know that I will not be able to be at this meeting on Ash Wednesday. Uh, I have to be out of town that day.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the administration? Uh, if I could see you, uh, after this meeting. If not, we see each other at 10.